Time is 6:00 PM, Council of City of Denison now convenes into a regular session. Tonight's invitational is to give everybody a second to pray. Father God, we thank you for today and we just thank you for another opportunity to come and do the work that's before the city of Denison today. We just pray for guidance and wisdom as we go through that. Father, we pray for our nation as we embark upon another election day tomorrow that leaders that are elected, God, will do the right thing for this nation, not be of self-interest, but for all the people. We thank you for all that you do and all that we see you doing in this community. In Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number three, consent agenda. I'll just go ahead and take the minutes out of it.
Mayor, if we could, before we go to three, can we do a city manager award?
Yes, please do.
Thank you. And again, I pause that. Tonight I have the distinct pleasure of giving two city managers award to two employees that frankly were extremely innovative in their approach. And I'm going to try to condense what Jack Forbes or supervisor, superintendent. Essentially, we had a meter out of QuickSet that was causing some problems and we replaced it. They went out of their way to make sure that did a good job with that. It's a big industrial meter, so it goes in this meter vault that's underground. And for the meter readers typically, they have to go and lift this heavy metal grate up to read the meter. And what these two gentlemen did was develop a system to take the meter and have an externally mounted reading device on it. So it's just a utility pole that comes out of the ground and there's a gauge on it that we can access and read. And so it speeds up the meter reader's ability to do that. They don't have to enter the vault to retrieve the reading, which is a huge time saver for them, but frankly, it's a safety improvement, too, because they're not having to squat and bend and lift a heavy metal grate. So really, this type of problem solving is exactly what we're trying to get out there in the rest of the organization. So what I'd like to do is get Shane Chupin and Larry Steele up here and give them an opportunity to be recognized. Because of their innovation and their approach to this, we're giving them the city managers' award for excellence. And that comes with a little thank you and a day off with pay. And so if you would please join me in congratulating Larry and Shane.
Thanks for everything you do. I think we'll take the minutes out of the consent agenda. Is there anything else in the consent agenda that needs to be reviewed for discussion? If they're being done, I'll take a motion on consent agenda.
Just wait to approve.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Can we go back to the approval of the minutes? I think Mr. Hanley had a question.
Mayor, on item B, I didn't make that motion because I voted against that. It says unanimously approved.
But I don't know who made the motion.
I don't remember.
Mr. Brockman made the motion.
Well, it says he made the second, so it's what it's written.
Got it.
You think?
Yeah.
She not here, but she did.
How immediate, but he was.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, but those changes, okay? Have a motion. Is that a motion to make that change?
Yeah, no, just make that change.
Approved. Motion from Mr. Hanley.
Second.
Second. Councilman Beckall, if everybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Agenda item four A, public hearings. Item 301A, South Texan Parkway, Ms. Brock.
Mayor and council, we're here tonight to receive report, hold a public hearing, consider an ordinance for a conditional use permit for an impound lot in light industrial district submitted by Harold and Marcus Holder, L C S, from Proton P R C owner for property of the J V Shannon survey abstract 1080, being a 68 by 68 tract of land at a one acre tract at 5018 South Texan Parkway. Applicants would like to be able to store the cars at this location that have been in an accident. The impound lot is required to be screened with a solid fence. Acted plans to place a wood fence in front of the location and a metal fence in the rear. The site is located between Midway Lock and Key and the convenience store. The surrounding zoning consists of commercial and light industrial. There were three property owners notified. We had no approvals and no disapprovals. Planning and zoning reviewed this and recommended approval and staff's recommend approval.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? Name and address, please, for the record.
I guess, Marcus, over there.
An address, please.
2206 Randall Lake Road, Denison, Texas. One with a P R, Proton P R C requesting.
Any questions? Is there anyone else here wishing to speak to this agenda item? If there being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. Motion.
Want to approve.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Malver, second from Councilman Beckall. If everybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Agenda item four B, public hearings, 1317 West Monterey Street. Ms. Brock.
Mayor and council, we're here tonight to receive report, hold a discussion and public hearing and consider an ordinance for an alley abandonment for a portion of an alley lying between lots eight and 10 and lots 16 through 19, block three. The red plot of blocks two and three Boulevard Park's Heights Edition containing 3,726 square feet at 1317 West Monterey. Advocate Margarithen Nielsen would like to expand the residence on the site. The only area available to expand is across the alleyway because of the steep elevation in the back of the house. Alleyway is not developed and has trees growing on the property. The other two property owners did not want to close a part of the alley as they used it to get to the rear of their property. The surrounding zoning consists of single-family district 7.5. The price value is $740 or 20 cents per square foot. There are no utilities in the alleyway. Planning and zoning reviewed this and has recommended approval and staff's recommend approval.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? If there being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council.
Letting motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Malver. All in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Now, agenda item five A, Snyder Electric Performance Contract. Mr. Hanley.
Thank you, Mayor. What we have before us tonight is part one of a two-part process here. As council knows, we've spent the last, really, six months almost, maybe more, longer than that, talking about moving to an automated meter process. Staff has received bids, we've negotiated contracts, and the Schneider component of this would be the installation of the meters. And what we're asking council to do is to authorize me to enter into an agreement with Schneider at the appropriate time. The reason why we're doing it ahead of time is because we're going to start having preliminary discussions about educating the public, marketing some of this information, so when we show up with a truck full of guys and some meters, people aren't worried or wondering what's going on. We'll have that, will the information out substantially ahead of time. But the total contract amount is an amendment to our existing agreement with Schneider, the Paul Paul Waste Treatment Plant. But this contract amendment is for 1.37 million and it would include turnkey installation services for the meters in your backup and identifies what actually is entailed. And it's more than just disconnecting and connecting the meters. There's customer contact if things are broken and there's a part of this number includes that some of these meters haven't been touched for a long time. And when you go to wrench on them, you're probably going to break the pipe. And that's just part of their cost assumption. And so there's an element of that that's all missing. We think it's a fair price, given the numbers and analysis we've done, Ron. And so we're asking council for approval of that tonight.
Discussion from council.
Shannon, is there any thoughts to actually putting this out to bid as a standalone project?
Yeah, we can.
Or what your thoughts were on Snyder versus just going with an open bid?
We know the quality of Schneider's work.
Okay.
And this is something that's going to require a level of care that we trust the service provider on because we're interfacing with our customers directly. And frankly speaking, it may not be the thing that you want to load the bins along, you know, because they interface directly with the customer. I do think the price is competitive. They're about $100,000 higher than when we did a NACAN analysis on what we thought the cost might be. So they're definitely within the ballpark. But yeah, if you went out to a competitive bid, you certainly would be certain that you got the lowest possible price, given Schneider's, given our experience with Schneider in the past, the work they did with the Paul Paul Waste Water Treatment Plant, the level of standard security delivery that. That's one of the reasons why I'm comfortable recommending is because I trust the product that can do this.
And so we're protected somewhat, though, on their pricing, right? Because they're part of our state bid or whatever, state contract? Do we have some protection there that?
That was bid. We got in business with Schneider through
Through the state.
A competitive bid contract originally. And we're piggybacking off of that original contract that we had with Schneider Energy to come in and serve as an energy services company for the energy.
Right, so we improved.
So not specifically, this scope of work is on the state contract, but there's?
That's correct. That's why we're, this amendment wanted to help us the scope of work that we're asking them to do now.
And as part of the original contract, you know, there was, you know, the deal with the, we leveraged it, the cost savings and all that stuff. This part would be completely separate from that. So that part is already put to bed, so to speak, as far as what those terms were on. So this would be completely outside of that.
That's correct.
Yep.
Will this work be contracted, like, subbed out to other individual sites? You're going to install the meters or they got crews that do that? Or how's that, what do they say it's going to happen?
Schneider's going to be doing the project management. Like most things nowadays, I'm sure they're going to have a group of subs that they use to do some of the work. I'd be naive to say they didn't. But our contract is with Schneider and our responsibility and our ability to, I guess, keep them in line with the contract language is there. They use subs on the Waste Water Treatment Plant process, too, from a construction standpoint. And that's part of the relationship you're getting is that, you know, they're going to use subs that are going to be able to do a good job.
Yeah, I guess work with them full-time so they want other work for other businesses found.
Right.
Along the lines of this process, you mentioned, you know, a lot of these meters have not been touched in probably a very long time. When we have breakage, do we have a plan on how we're going to handle that as far as, I mean, are we going to shoulder, if there's extensive damage to someone's line from the meter to their house, we're going to be, we have a plan on what, whose responsibility that's going to be?
Yes. If, if I could spell that here, if I can find it, I'll find it.
Okay.
They cover a certain distance on the other side of the meter.
Okay.
If line's broken, then they'll cover to some amount. It's not a huge amount, but if the pipe snaps, they'll repair that.
Okay.
If they get into the meter box that's totally covered with dirt and you can't work, then we're going to have to dig it that out. And so what will more than likely happen is if they're out there, we're going to have a guy who's ready to go to assist and will be more of a ha-ha shot for lack of a term. They need somebody to call, they'll show up.
Right. But I mean, as far as financially, whose responsibility that stuff's going to fall to?
There's a scope, if it's within the scope of work that's here, it's their responsibility. So if the pipes break from the attachment side around the meter, that's going to be their job to fix.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I mean, if traditionally, from the resident's house, from the citizen's house to the meters, they're responsible, the citizens, we're not going to be holding that same line while we're doing this.
Correct. If Schneider breaks the customer side of the line, they'll fix it.
We're going to, yeah.
Yeah.
For certain footage?
Yeah. Yeah, if it breaks five foot away from the meter, then probably it'd have to be a law or not break anyways.
Some of the older establishments probably need to watch that.
Yeah.
You know, just be mindful of that.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we're communicating with the customer.
Right. Okay, cool.
Other questions? Again, we've been talking about this in several capital budget retreats and other, I can remember this before, even before, I think, Mr. Hanley. I got here, we started having discussions of, I guess, so again, pardon.
One thing I do want to say extra, because this is unique, this is different than what another company would come in and just install, is the software interface component. They wanted to assist us with that to make sure the data comes down as accurate. Another company wouldn't necessarily do that. And so that's another reason why I'm comfortable with this.
When we get the data from this, I know noticing in the past, there was like leak detection and certain things. Is this going to be a download just pretty much from date to date? Or is it going to download like what it was consistent, you know, if it had a, some of that kind of leak detection? I know it's only read once a month, but.
Well, no, it's read anytime someone's within, the receiver's within a listening area of the meter. So we're going to only update our system probably on a monthly basis, but we'll have the data. So yeah, if someone has a leak on their system, it'll know that. And so if they go back and look at their bill, we can help them pinpoint where that time of day was, you know, how much was used. They're still going to have leak, but we'll have the data to help them troubleshoot what's going on.
It'll catch that data.
Yep.
Motion?
May I make motion to approve?
Second.
Motion, Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Beckall. If everybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Agenda item five B, the second part of this, AMR system. Mr. Hanley.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is the second part. Staff, Public Works Department, has looked at a couple of different meters, one from a company called Neptune, one from a company called Census and Mastrometer. They would like to use the Mastrometer product. It's the meter product we're using now. And so for some of the newer meters that have been replaced in the ground, they can simply remove the register and put the new AMR register in without having to replace the brass components, which is some of a cost savings, not a lot, but a little bit of a cost savings to us. The total price for this is two and a half million dollars. And it will replace every meter in the city of Denison would be a new meter or have that new register. If it's not physically replaced, it has been replaced within a viable period of time, three years or so. You're not going to see any degradation in the end reading at that point in time. This is an AMR system, which is different from an AMI. If we had the AMI system, if we paid additional costs for that, you really could get a, you can get an email warrant saying, you just had a sudden leak in your water system and it's gone to the meter, you know, and it's not your washing machine. So you need to figure out what that is. But that comes at a price. It's about almost $1.1 to $1.83 more than what the AMR system has. I think for our community, AMR systems are the better product, primarily because we're still going to have some folks that are dropping the field to collect the data, got to drive by to get the data off the meter. They'll be able to be the eyes and ears out there. So if you have a pothole, if you have a stop sign that's going, if you have a street sign that's missing, they'll be able to write those down either through a ticket system or just through a, here's a note, I'm going to plug it with the computer and get back to the office. The other thing is that I think it's good, I think it's good to have that set of eyes driving, telling on a regular basis, that you know, outside of the potholes and the street signs, brush pile, there's furniture that gets dumped. I think it can push us towards that more attractive urban landscape again. I think that's a component, that's one of the reasons why I think AMR system might be the system for us. As far as, sometimes, most of the time, with every technology improvement, there's efficiencies that are created. And unfortunately, the outcome of that efficiencies oftentimes is a reduction in staff personnel. And that is the case here. Through this process, we're recommending the reduction of three personnel, two meter readers and one meter tech. And we still have, we'll still have two meter readers and one meter tech, just basically reducing the staff by half. That's about $130,000 cost savings by implementing the system on an annual basis. What we're doing with those people now, we've informed them, we've informed those work groups that, hey, this is, this will take place and council approves it, then three, there will be three less people on the team. What we're working with it now is trying to identify positions within the city they can take advantage of. Some of them we're helping get education and training to maybe transition to a different position in the city that they're not qualified for at the moment, but they could be qualified if they get that training. So we're working with them. Our goal would be not to have to give anybody a ping slip, but just allow them to organically transfer to another part of the city that has a vacancy. They had to well, after the position. So we are working with them now to identify those opportunities. At the end of the day, the total meters plus the install, it's a $3.89 million contract. This is $600,000 less than what we had penciled in as our number, based off some of the other meter systems that we'd identified. That $600,000 will just be used for additional capital improvement. So you got year four, year five, none of us are going to be surprised if some of the numbers are not as robust because you've had four or five years of cost escalation. Even though we've engineered those escalations into the numbers, it's still going to take place. So this just gives us a little more precision. I'm happy to answer any questions, Steph, from Councilman Hanley.
When is it scheduled to be discovered?
We issued that in March, which means we'll probably be able to start April. And then it's a, what do they say?
Switch after fifth of the month process?
Switch after the next fifth of the year. Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
But the planning, can you go ahead and start being ready for the debt issuance?
I want to start, yes. I want to start getting our internal processes together. I want that mapped out. I want to get a better understanding of maybe how we're going to change our route maps associated with it. There's conversation that needs to start taking place. I don't really want to waste staff time unless I know what we're going to do. So this gives the certainty to do that, gives the contractors the certainty, they need to start having those discussions as well.
Schneider help us some of that, that planning as well?
Yes, the wills.
Plus the ability to upgrade to the other system for one of us in the future, about three years?
To an AMI system?
Yeah. I noticed when we were at T and L, there's some vendors that said ours can go up, you know, start at this one, go to that one.
They both, every vendor makes an AMI product and they make an AMR product. Certain manufacturers are known for one product or the other. Mastrometer's really known, they have a good reputation on the AMR system. I haven't heard anything good or bad about their AMI system. Theoretically, it is possible to upgrade, yes, but the cost isn't in the meters. So if we're going to go on an AMI system, it'd always be better to just buy the AMI meters and go ahead and bite the bullet and get your cellular network established because that's the real cost, is you're building a cellular backbone to read these meters as they send their signals out. The meter cost is the difference between, it's not all like reading.
The life expectancy in most of these meters can be?
Full life of the regular meter. So the meter will start reading less accurately before the battery's dying from a, for a designed life expectancy standpoint.
Shannon, you mentioned as staff runs the routes to, you know, collecting data or whatever, then the ticket process for the stop signs and brush and all that. Speak to why that's not happening now, like why we're not able to do that currently.
When these, when the meter readers are out there reading the meters, they're engaged in reading the meters.
Just the physical process?
Absolutely, it's a physical process. You've got to open up there to the meter lid, you've got to watch out for the dogs when they're coming all of a sudden like in the kitchen. It's a full-time, it's a full-time. And frankly, it's labor intensive and it's probably a little more dangerous than people realize.
I like motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Beckall. If everybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Agenda item five C, affordable housing program. We're going to bid, this is inside of that. Mr. Hanley.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a, this is one of, this is a good item. We've been working as a community for a number of years to create an affordable housing program that is going to be able to help redevelop parts of town that traditionally or historically have had a hard time. Once the house is gone, it's difficult to get people interested in putting another house up. And we worked with D D A, we worked with community banks, we worked with local realtors, local builders, business owners, and creating the solution that has borne some fruit. We asked, we had a big builders meeting and we had a number of builders in the room. That meeting was hosted by Main Street Lumber. Some of our other sponsors were there, American Bank of Texas, Landmark Bank, Independent Bank, D D A were present. When we worked, we talked about what the program was. We asked them to invite to submit bids within 30 days. And they did just that. We had two builders that submitted bids. Mike Schrader submitted bids for two lots on 311 West Bond and 327 West Bond Street. He's proposing to build two homes. And then Roger Ball has submitted for five lots, 916 West Baker, 918 West Baker, 410 West Walker, 423 West Walker, and 525 West Walker. And he's proposing to build five homes that meet our program requirements. The builder required to build an affordable home with a purchase price of less than 2.72 times, 80% low income limits for a family of three who show any innocent, translate that to English, and it's a home that's about $115,000. It must go to an owner occupier, but nothing in the program determines if a builder from owner's fate is to purchase. So it's got to be owner occupied, but a builder could tote the nose, so to speak. City's offering to follow incentives, put two roll-off waste containers for construction debris generated by the job site. You can't bring the purple and stuff, you've got to be pure stuff. Water and sewer tap connections at no charge for waiving building permit fees and inspection fees. The redevelopment lots are going to reduce the city's loan obligations and return the properties to taxpaying individuals, which is a good thing. We recommend that council awarded lots to Mike Schrader and Roger Ball and authorize the city manager to enter into agreements and execute special warranty deeds in accordance with the city's affordable housing program requirements as previously approved for 916 West Baker, 918 West Baker, 211 West Bond, 327 West Bond, 410 West Walker, 423 West Walker, and 525 West Walker. There's a number of different backup items in here that I know council's had a chance to see and I'd be happy to answer any questions you want to have, Ms. Brock.
Questions, discussion from council? Robert, on the Mike Schrader, have you looked at the quality of his homes and his workmanship and viewed that?
In his seminal, he showed two buildings that he had built in the past. They meet the program requirements.
And he's done work in Denison before?
He has done work in Denison before. I've never personally toured a home he's built, but his seminal requirements meet program requirements. And from a standpoint of, is he a qualified builder? He has shown in the past that he is.
What excites me is I look at some of these renderings, specifically the ones from Roger Ball, you know, they're not, I mean, they have some character to them. And again, this is a huge win for our affordable housing program and for these neighborhoods that these homes will be placed in. When you take a vacant lot that's neglected, and in recent years, it was a dilapidated structure that people had to drive by every day and look at every day, and you replace it with these new homes, not only is it good for those around there, but it's also providing a much-needed housing component for our workforce in Denison. And so this is a great first step in this project. And I want to, again, commend many, many people for the work. This was, Robert listed several that were at that meeting that night, as well as This was, Robert listed several that were at that, that meeting that night, and it was well-attended. This is really a, again, a community effort, several stakeholders trying to, trying to get this going, so.
I just want to make one comment about some of the renderings, especially the ones on West Walker, that are more of the, kind of the row house with the crawl space foundation. That, that house, one month, we won't end up having a crawl space foundation. That, that image is from the builders' system, the site online, you can get, get your plans. I doubt he'll put a crawl space in. He'll probably do a slab upgrade. Same house, you just won't have the, the slab is going to be a large slab with the, something over.
Mayor, I just want to say that, you know, I, I too am very excited about this program, and, you know, it's, it's kind of an interesting phenomenon, but, you know, we, we do have the capability to have kind of tipping point situation where you get four or five of these homes on a street or whatever, and, and you see folks then, you know, even homes that, that are currently in, that have been neglected, you know, people will, you know, come in and acquire those homes and fix them up and all those things. So it's, you know, you see it in the metroplex all the time, look neighborhoods that get revitalized, you know, various places. So there's no reason that, maybe not to the same scale that we see there, but, you know, our community can certainly see that. And I think it just takes a few footholds to see some of that, you know, see that's an exponential benefit. So I'm, I too am very excited about it.
Motion from the council?
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Malbert, second from Councilman Beckall, if everybody's saying aye. Pose like a sign. Motion carries. I think council will now go into executive session pursuant to chapter five, item one, Texas Department of Labor, to discuss professional, sorry, to discuss rules of professional conduct conflicts with chapter and Texas disciplinary rules and matters which is attorney's duty to the governmental body or consult with attorney about pending and contemplated litigation and discuss employment of a board commission. Time is six thirty-two.